Meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for March the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. If you would please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And as to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Valerie Nasserbeck.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
Corey Stites.
Here.
Denise Hoppy.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Rachel Grace Haltine.
I'm present.
Judy Hutchinson.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all eight members of council are present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet, you have the February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three city council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections to be noted in the minutes? Seeing none, we'll let the minutes stand as presented. Counselors, are there any changes to be noted in the agenda? Seeing none, we'll proceed as presented in the agenda. We have some recognitions and proclamations and... I'll go to the... Tonight, we're really pleased to congratulate student athletes from the Wheat Ridge High School who have committed to their sport at the collegiate level. To possess the athletic ability and academic strengths to be offered a spot in college, on a college-level team, is a great honor and a great accomplishment. I'm pleased to invite Wheat Ridge High School Athletic Director Jason Campbell to the podium to introduce these outstanding students. So, Coach Campbell, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Working in a high school is an extraordinary experience for multiple reasons. But as the athletic director, I get the privilege to watch young men and women chase their dreams of academic and athletic prowess. And it gives me great pleasure to watch these student athletes prepare in the classroom and then go prepare after school for hours on end. And then during the offseason, when the team isn't even in session, preparing to do great things. And then they get a culmination of that once they get to play their sport and participate and compete and then exceed. And so it gives me great pleasure to recognize a few athletes that have taken or have the ability to keep their grades up and academically be eligible to go to college, but then also put in the time and effort to athletically be offered scholarships. So with that being said, there's a few athletes here. I'll introduce them. And then there are a few others that I would like to also introduce. Our first athlete is Hannah Sitzman. Come on up, Hannah. You can hang out right there, Hannah. Hannah is actually going to go to Sacramento State University for gymnastics, so well done. Our next athlete is Maddie Bailey. Maddie was actually here, I think, last week or a couple of weeks ago with a cross-country team. But Maddie is going to go to Western Colorado University for cross-country. Our next athlete is Wolfgang LaRue. Wolfgang will be going to Nebraska Wesleyan University for football. And the last athlete that's here this evening is Emmy Eaton. And Emmy is going to be going to Southwestern Oregon Community College for softball. And then some of the athletes that are not here but are also going on the colleges, Joaquin Contréz Felico, he's going to the University of South Dakota for swimming. Andrew Peterson, going to Dartmouth College for swimming. Itzel Bustos is going to Northeastern Junior College in Colorado for soccer. And then Marco Neswadi is going to go to Irvine Valley College in California for soccer. So congratulations to all these athletes. Again, thank you very much, council members and mayor. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Coach, thanks for coming. Students, before you get out of here, you've got to go up in front of my chair there, all the city councilmen's. Counselors like to get into the action. I would like to invite Jennifer Kempes up to us. Nice to have you here. Jennifer Kempes is Special Events Associate with the Ralston House. And I'm really honored to have a proclamation about Child Abuse Prevention Month in April, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas every child deserves to grow up in a safe, nurturing environment, free from harm and fear, every responsible person will agree that even one abused child is too many. And whereas the month of April has been designated nationally as Child Abuse Prevention Month, we encourage all community members to join in our renewing our commitment to learning what we can do to promote the safety and well-being of children. And whereas Wheat Ridge has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child abuse and help parents obtain assistance they need. And whereas our community is stronger when all community members become aware of child abuse prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs, such as Ralston House, succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community. And whereas all community members, community agencies, faith organizations, and businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council do hereby proclaim the month of April, two thousand and twenty-three, to be Child Abuse Prevention Month, dated this thirteenth day of March, two thousand and twenty-three. And I have a... And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much, council and mayor, for recognizing Ralston House and April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. In two thousand and twenty-two, we interviewed eleven hundred children throughout all of our locations, forty-three of which came from the Wheat Ridge community. I was invited tonight by Detective Sherry Ells. And on my way in, she sent me a text saying, "I got called out on a child abuse sex assault case, and I'm at Lutheran." And what that means is she's going to start the process of investigation. And that child, who's now in a hospital setting, petrified, scared, they'll come to Ralston House next to be interviewed. And we're set up as a safe and welcoming house-like environment. Well, they'll feel comfortable and not re-traumatized to tell their story, and we can move them through the process towards healing. And that's really our goal. So we'll be planning blue pinwheels throughout the month of April in our support, and we ask the community to show that support as well. We also, our house is actually right down the street here, off of Twentieth and Wadsworth. And anyone in the public is invited to tour it if you want to see what the process is like when we don't have cases going on. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much and the great work you do in our community. I would like to invite Sin Chapman, the Executive Director of Victims Outreach, to come up. How are you tonight? Thank you for joining us. I am doing well. Thank you. I'm really pleased to have a proclamation to talk about Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April, two thousand and twenty-three, and Colorado Denim Day, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas every day, women, men, and children across Colorado suffer the pain and trauma of sexual assault. And whereas sexual violence affects individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and circumstances. And whereas this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars. And whereas during National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, we recommit ourselves not only to lifting the veil of secrecy and shame surrounding sexual violence, but also to raise awareness and expanding support for victims. And whereas at the state level, we must work to provide necessary resources to victims of every circumstance, including medical and mental health services, relocation and housing assistance, and advocacy during the criminal justice process. And whereas Colorado communities can come together to increase awareness about sexual violence, decrease its frequency, hold offenders accountable, support victims, and heal lives. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge City Council, do hereby declare the month of April, two thousand and twenty-three, as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and further recognize April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Colorado Denim Day, encouraging Wheat Ridge residents to wear denim to show their support for the victims of sexual assault and highlight this issue in our community. Signed this thirteenth day of April, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you so much for being here and the work you do. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you. I'm Sin Chapman, again, the Executive Director at Victim Outreach Incorporated. We have been serving Wheat Ridge since nineteen eighty-seven, and we're very, very proud of that record. We appreciate your continuing support of us, council and mayor, and the city leadership, and certainly our partnership with your police department and Chief Murtha. Just an excellent team. I got the corresponding text from my Deputy Director, Jen Griffin, who is on the same call this evening. And so that's obviously very sad and unfortunate. And what a blessing that we have the collaboration between Ralston House and VOI. So an honor on behalf of the victims and survivors that we serve, and thank you so much.
Thank you again. Okay, we are now at our Public's Right to Speak. Members of the public may come and speak on any matter not on the agenda during Public's Right to Speak for a maximum of three minutes. When I call your name, if you would please come to the podium, give us your first name and your last name. If you would please give us your address, then you will have three minutes to address the council. After your introduction, the clerk will set the timing buttons. There's a green one, an orange, a yellow one, and a red one. When the green one and the orange one have gone off or the yellow one have gone off, you're just about out of time. So when the red one comes on, if you'd please conclude your remarks, we would appreciate that. I have two speakers signed up to speak. Our first speaker is Kathy Konas. And our on-deck speaker, I believe, is Denise Martin. No, ma'am, this is items that are not on the agenda. Oh, it is. Okay. Then we'll have our next speaker come. If you would please introduce yourself. I'll pull that down. Great.
Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Kathy Konas, and I live at ten-one-hundred West Thirty-third Avenue. I have lived in Wheat Ridge for forty years, the last thirty-five in District Three. I have also served as a Parks and Recreational Commissioner for over ten years. I have been a registered voter in Wheat Ridge this entire time. I signed the ADU petition last summer, but apparently my signature was rejected by the city clerk for not being a registered voter. Later, my signature was validated but not added to the count. I would like my signature to rightfully be counted and request the city council and city clerk resolve this issue without it having to go to the district court process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our other speaker is going to speak on another item. So if you have not signed up but would like to speak under Public's Right to Speak, you may come now and speak on an item. Please give us your first name, last name, and an address, please.
Hi, I'm Catherine Grant, and I've lived in Wheat Ridge for decades and been a registered voter. I signed the petition regarding Wheat Ridge Ordinance Seventeen Forty-four on ADUs. And my understanding is that it was deemed insufficient due to signatures being rejected. And the group that started the petition now feels forced to file a lawsuit in order to move forward with getting their voices heard. So I'm here to request that the city council, sorry, hopefully you could have, you heard what I said before, to request that the city council and the city clerk resolve this issue without having it go through the district court process. The citizens would prefer not to go to court, and they would like to protect their constitutional rights. And as our elected representative, we ask that you represent us so that we can all have a voice. And I thank you so much for your time. And yes, just would like to have all of those citizens who signed the petition be heard. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. May I get an address from you just for the record?
Thirty-eight eighty-one Estes Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who would like to speak under public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Starker, council, and staff. My name is Dorothy Archer. My address is thirty-six forty Marshall Street. I too would like to address the Wheat Ridge Ordinance Seventeen Forty-four on ADUs, accessory dwelling units. It has been deemed efficient because a number of valid signatures were improperly rejected and not counted. And the citizens have been forced to file a lawsuit to protect their rights. The citizens should not be forced to go to court. This is our constitutional right. You are elected representative, and it's your duty to protect our constitutional rights. I request that the city council and city clerk resolve this issue with having to go through a district court process. In my heart, as a resident for fifty-four years, I think this can be resolved quite easily with time given, with people in question. It is a concern of my own, has nothing to do with the fact that I'm a plaintiff on this. As a citizen, I feel deeply concerned that this ADUs is quite large. It changes the dimensions of a city. I feel in my heart this should have been put on a ballot for all of the voters of Wheat Ridge to have a say-so. It changes the dimension forever. Maybe you only have ten or twenty or thirty or forty applications within the next few years. It still deems a change. You said that it was not changing of the zones, it's an addendum. Well, if you change the structure of the zoning, then you have changed it. I think that the public has a right to be heard on this, most seriously. Other issues that you have put forward, bravo. Do we have anything to say so about the Airbnb's? No. Giving people a chance to make an extra dollar, providing a place for tourists. But this ADUs is quite permanent. I question, because I'm not knowledgeable enough, if you put a little house in your backyard, then we're looking at what? Sewer, water, electric, gas, and trash. I'm looking down the road. If too many people take account of this, where does it put us in these extremities? We can guess, we can avoid it. But I think as all citizens of Wheat Ridge, including our council, you really need to think much further ahead. Let's give everyone a chance to have a say-so on this. It's lasting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who's here in the hall who would like to speak tonight on Public's Right to Speak?
Good evening. My name is Ihor Figlus. I live at ninety-seven seventy-five West Thirty-sixth Avenue. And I'd like to also address the issue of the petition on the ADUs. The item in question is not the actual ADU at this point. It's now become, it's devolved into a question of citizens' voter rights. The petition was deemed insufficient because of rejected signatures. Those signatures, there are questionable decisions. In the hearing about this, the clerk admitted that he had found other signatures, which were then not included in the account of valid signatures. And he also stated they could have made more mistakes. We have reviewed the signatures. We found a number of signatures that are valid, validly-registered voters, and should have been accepted. There are not many, but they're key. But the bottom line here is that every one of you sitting on the dais took an oath of office to support the Constitution of Colorado and the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution guarantees voter rights. And these voter rights are not being recognized by rejection of these signatures. Citizens should not have to go to court to fight for their rights. And I know that city council has been instructed by attorneys not to speak about the case. But that doesn't mean that you can do nothing. You can speak to the attorneys, you can speak amongst yourselves, you can work out a way to settle this. Most cases that go to court are not, never go to trial, but are settled in an amicable manner between the parties. And I think the city council, as elected representatives, as people who have taken an oath of office, have a responsibility to seek that solution and not cause turmoil within the community by allowing those voter rights to be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons in the hall here who would like to speak tonight on Public's Right to Speak? If you are joining us online, you may raise your hand, and we will bring you into the meeting to speak. I see no one else coming to the podium. Mr. Clerk, has anyone raised their hand in the virtual format? Okay. We have no more speakers tonight, so we'll close our Public's Right to Speak. And we will go to our agenda item number one. Councilperson Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council Bill Number Zero Six, Two Thousand and Twenty-three, an ordinance amending Section Twenty-six dash eight-zero-three dot G of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to adopt the flood hazard delineation maps for Clear Creek, dated September second, two thousand and twenty-two, as a local flood hazard area. At issue, the Colorado Water Conservation Board has designated the updated flood hazard delineation map for the Clear Creek as a state floodplain map. The city needs to adopt the updated flood hazard delineation map as a local flood hazard area so that the best available flood maps can be used to regulate the floodplains along Clear Creek.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Our staff is ill this evening, so he's joining us through Zoom if you have any questions. Mark, did you have anything to add to the issue statement? You're on Zoom, Mark, or you're on mute, sorry.
I was. You'd think after three years I'd have this figured out, sorry. I do have a presentation to make on this?
A presentation or...
I have a presentation.
We're asking council if they need one.
If it's desired, yeah.
Doesn't look like we need one tonight, Mark.
Okay, I'm good. Then I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to open this to the public to speak on this item. I have no one signed up to speak at this time, I don't believe. But if you are here and would like to speak, now is your opportunity to come to the podium to speak on this item. But let me make sure that I don't... But let me make sure that I don't have anyone signed up to speak. No one signed up to speak. And if you are joining us online and would like to speak on this item, you may raise your hand and we will bring you into the meeting. Mr. Clerk, anyone, okay, so we will close our public's comments on this item and go to questions from council. Thank you. Are there any questions from council of staff before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion? Counselor Nosler Beck.
Mark or anyone on staff, can you just clarify how people will be notified of these changes with the, with the new, with the new maps?
Yes, is, we, we just got our mapping system online again. And so we weren't able through this process to notify folks if they're going to be, you know, have increased, show increased flood risks or be in an area where the floodway gets a little wider. But as we've got that online now, I will reach out to those folks that are, we just have a handful of properties that fit that criteria. I'll, I'll put together a letter and, and craft that and send that out just to the folks where there's a, a change that, that puts them in a, in a higher risk area. We, we, hopefully when these maps get adopted by FEMA in two to four years, we'll have dozens of folks that will no longer be in the floodplain or the floodway. And so that'll be a really happy letter to write, that I get to write. This one's not as happy a letter to write.
Mark, wouldn't you, when you do that, would you mind just keeping if, if there's notifications that are going out to residents that are in specific districts? Could you just let the counselors know?
Absolutely, we can, we can give you a list of the properties and a, and a copy of the letter that goes out, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council before I close the public hearing? I'm going to close the public hearing and Counselor Dozeman, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number zero six twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending section twenty-six dash eight zero three dot G of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to Adopt the Flood Hazard Delineation Maps for Clear Creek, dated September second, twenty twenty-two, as a local flood hazard area on second reading and that it take effect fifteen days after, after final publication.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Nosler Beck. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll ask you to turn the lights off on the podium, please.
Sure.
We will go to agenda item number two. Counselor Ohm, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number zero four dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending section twenty-six dash one one five dot E of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning requests for interpretation by the Board of Adjustment. At issue, the proposed ordinance establishes a deadline by which an applicant may appeal an administrative code interpretation of the Board of Adjustment. No such deadline currently exists in the code and the lack of deadline is inconsistent with best practice and inconsistent with other code provisions which clearly establish a timeframe for appeal.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Community Development Director Lauren Mikulak has a few words.
Thank you. So just to add a few more details to that introduction, our staff makes zoning code interpretations every day. And sometimes folks don't agree with those or want more detail. And so occasionally, not often, but a couple of times a year, we make a formal determination in writing. And even less frequently, that gets appealed to the Board of Adjustment. It's happened twice in ten years, most recently last year. And that appeal last year was related to a billboard and it surprised us because it came in six months after the letter that had been written interpreting the code. You saw from the code citations elsewhere in the council action form that the appeal window is usually ranging from ten to thirty days. So we spoke with Mr. Dahl and determined it would be appropriate to put an appeal deadline into the code and we're recommending thirty days in this case. That's all I have unless you have questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, I would like to invite the public to speak on this item. I have no one signed up to speak. But if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now by coming to the podium. And if you are joining us online in the virtual format, if you'd raise your hand, we're happy to bring you into the meeting.
No one, Mr. Mayor.
And it looks like we have no one coming forward to speak, so I'll open this up for questions from council. Any questions before I close the hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the hearing and Counselor Ohm, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number zero four twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending section twenty-six dash one one five dot E of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning requests for interpretation by the Board of Adjustment and that it take effect immediately upon adoption of second reading and signature by the mayor as permitted by section five point one one of the Charter.
Second?
The motion and a second by Counselor Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. We will now go to agenda item number three. Counselor Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number zero five dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending sections twenty-two dash fifty-eight and twenty-two dash sixty-seven of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to establish an exemption from the city's sales and use tax for certain retail delivery fees enacted by the state of Colorado. At issue, Colorado Senate Bill twenty-one dash two sixty created a Clean Fleet enterprise to impose a Clean Fleet retail delivery fee, CFRDF, to be paid by the purchaser of tangible personal property delivered to the purchaser by a motor vehicle. The fee is twenty-seven cents per delivery. Delivery fees are currently subject to city sales tax. As a home rule city, Wheat Ridge is able to establish its own laws, including the ability to exempt from taxation certain goods and services. The attached ordinance exempts the CFRDF from taxation.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Our deputy city manager, Alex Scheck, will add a few items to this.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Thank you, Mayor and council. Just, I'll just add a couple of comments to the issue statement, which I think explained this. I gave a brief presentation to you all back on February sixth of this year and you did give consent to move forward with exempting the Clean Fleet retail delivery fee from taxation at that time. In addition to the issue statement that Counselor Hutchinson just read, I'll just remind you all that a portion of the CLE, the CFRDF will flow to the city through the Highway Users Tax Fund. We estimate that we'll receive incremental fifteen thousand a year or so. It's hard to know just yet, but that's our estimate. So our, our recommendation, which again you accepted on, on February sixth, is to exempt, simply exempt the fee from taxation, really to ease the burden on local businesses, but also to ease the burden on our very lean administrative staff here at the city. We just think it's cleaner to exempt it from taxation. We'll still be collecting revenue. So that's, all of our neighbors, as I mentioned to you last month, have also exempted the fee from taxation. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from council, I'd like to invite the public to speak on this item number three. If you'd like to speak, I don't have anyone signed up. But if you're here and would like to speak, please come to the podium. And if you are joining us on the online virtual format, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and we will bring you into the meeting to speak. Is there anyone?
No one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, no one raising their hands, so we will close our public's right to speak on this item and open this up to questions from council. Are there any questions for staff on this item before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and Counselor Hutchinson, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number zero five dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance amending sections twenty-two dash fifty-eight and twenty-two dash sixty-seven of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to establish an exemption from the city's sales and use tax for certain retail delivery fees enacted by the state of Colorado on second reading and that it take effect fifteen days final publication.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Ohm. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hutchinson. Hulteen, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Too many H's over at this end.
Too many H's.
Yeah, too many H's. Thank you. I was not here on the sixth, unfortunately. But I, so, so I am involved in a lot of this work through my other, my day job. And so the twenty-seven cent fee is broken down into funding a variety of different funds, including our H U T F fund. But it's also used to fund our multimodal options fund, which is something we've been a huge beneficiary of in the city. Those funds are also used for the bridge and tunnel enterprise, which again, we have been a tremendous beneficiary of in the city. The funds are also used for clean transit enterprise and air pollution mitigation enterprise. And I fundamentally believe, much like if you don't have children, you still pay into the school system through your taxes. We are part of a regional transportation system and these are regional issues. And we've actually been tremendous beneficiary of the funds that this particular fee is funding. The state legislature is in the process right now of revising the fee structure to be less burdensome for local businesses. So local business with less than five hundred thousand dollars in revenue would be exempt from having to participate in this program. So I am very strongly not supporting us from exempting because we, we are beneficiaries of it. And we are part of a region that has collective issues around our, just our environment and the impact that delivery trucks have on our roads. We're paying for the roads that those delivery trucks are driving down my street every, and I'm one of them. Amazon arrived at my house right before I came. And so to me, we do have the right to set our own taxation and fees, but I will not be supporting exempting out of this because I believe that this is good money spent and it's solving problems that I care deeply about. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Counselor Weaver.
I just have a quick question of clarification. May I still ask that? I was just curious, does this include food delivery or just hard goods?
Yes, is anything on which sales or use tax applies? So again, the, the fee is still collected.
We, yes. Right, just curious.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed by a vote of five to three with Members Nosler, Beck, Weaver and Hulteen voting no.
Thank you. We are now going to go to agenda item number four. This may be numbered on the agenda as another number one, but we're going to call it number four. Counselor, Mayor Protem Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number zero nine dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvement fund, program fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars and to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to the Ayers Associates Incorporated for professional services for the Thirty-Eighth Avenue West Study. At issue, city council's twenty, or two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two strategic plan includes, I quote, "reexamine and advance sidewalks on Thirty-Eighth Avenue." To that end, a consultant selection process has been completed to perform a master planning study for Thirty-Eighth Avenue from Kipling Street to Youngfield Street. Staff is recommending that the selection, or the selected consultant, Ayers Associates Incorporated be awarded a contract in the amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. Lauren Mikulak again.
Okay, Director Mikulak.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. We're really excited to finally be kicking off this process. I think it's been a long time coming in some folks' minds. It builds on a lot of the pre-COVID work that Local Works and some of our community members did. There was a Kaiser Permanente grant that they received. This process will be heavily reliant on public engagement, so we'll be sending you a lot of information and getting project information on what's up Wheat Ridge. We'll be studying the drainage. That will probably be a little more technical in nature. As you know, there's a lot of roadside ditches in that segment, so any improvements done in the future would likely replace those roadside ditches. The end result of this process will be thirty percent conceptual plan. So if we were to move forward, we'd have a separate contract for the design phase. And we will very likely be before you a couple of times over the coming months to give you updates in study session. Mark Wesberg is still on the Zoom with us. He's project managing this project. And that's all we have.
Thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, I would like to open this up for the public comment. I have no one signed up to speak, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. If you are online, you may raise your hand in the virtual format and we will bring you into the meeting. And I will, I see no one coming forward at this time. Mr. Clerk, anyone online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we will close our public's comment on this item and go to questions from council. Any questions for staff on this item before we go to a vote for motion? Okay, seeing none. Mayor Protem Stites, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number zero nine dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three capital improvement program fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of six hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and ten dollars and to award a contract and approve subsequent payments to Ayers Associates Incorporated for professional services for Thirty-Eighth Avenue West Study.
Second?
There's a motion and who had it over here? Counsel, Counselor Dozeman had the second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Weaver.
I would just like to voice my support for this. It is very much needed in that we are coming up on fill ditch season and I will be out on Thirty-Eighth Avenue with a shovel, trying to make sure that the water does not go into my yard and continues down the open ditches on Thirty-Eighth. So I would appreciate if council would support this move. Thank you.
Well, I hope not only Phil Ditch is there, but Bill Ditch and Sally Ditch are there to help out too. Okay, Counselor Hulteen this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am also extremely excited to see this moving forward, having worked extensively on the initial Kaiser grant as both a community member and ultimately as a consultant on it. I've brought this up in the past, but there was quite a bit of community input. And I just am gonna, this is really a comment, not a question, but in the city provided data, it doesn't actually list the Activate Thirty-Eighth or whatever, Thirty-Eighth thousand. Whatever we call, what did we call it? We call it Activate, yeah, we called it Activate Thirty-Eighth. Yeah, Create Your Thirty-Eighth was the other one. We're so clever with our, our names. And so I just, I think it's important to be integrating that because there is such a thing as engagement fatigue. And the community living on that corridor has been engaged, you know, on and off for years without really seeing much happening. So just making sure that their previous points of engagement are reflected back to them as part of the process will ensure that we're not furthering the engagement fatigue, but hopefully connecting them more meaningfully and confidence that investments will be coming, hopefully. And with that, I'm just, I'm super excited. And I am very much looking forward to seeing what a design could look like that addresses both drainage and safety for pedestrians and bikes. I've mentioned this before, there's, the bike lane at one point is literally the size of a yellow creakneck squash that I pulled from my garden one year and took a picture of the squash. Those are not big squash. So it is a particularly treacherous corridor for people who don't have access to a car. And there are a lot of people in that, in that stretch of Thirty-Eighth who really do depend on being able to safely walk and ride a bike to, to the parks, to school, to the rec center, to Sprouts, to Starbucks and beyond. So excited to see what it might look like and then hopefully we can get the voters to support some funding to make it happen. Thanks.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just echo Ms. Weaver and Ms. Hulteen that this is definitely a needed addition to this, this corridor. This is something that my family and I use quite a bit for both biking, walking, as well as the new students that are going to be going from the Color Strand area to Prospect Valley. Many of those students are going to be using this, this corridor as well. I do want to thank Local Works and everybody who participated with the Activate Thirty-Eighth, including Ms. Hulteen. And I do recall, I think Ms. Jenny Snell was very, very active in that as well. And then the city and all my counselors who have also supported this as far as we go. This is something we, we mentioned a little bit at our District Three meeting this past Saturday and it was supported pretty overwhelmingly as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. With that, we will go to agenda item number five. Counselor Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. A Resolution number zero eight dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jefferson County Open Space to accept a Trails partnership grant in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand dollars for designing and building a trail. of $410,000 for designing and building a trail around Tabor Lake. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge was awarded $410,000 in funding through the Jeffco Open Space Trails Partnership Program for an engineered design and construction of an accessible, safe, and stable trail around Tabor Lake that connects to the Clear Creek Trail and Van Gordon Street. To receive the funding, the city must accept the grant award by directing the mayor to sign the attached grant agreement.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
Yeah, we do. Very excited about this grant. Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Director.
Okay, Director O'Donnell.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. We've discussed the Tabor Lake project at length many times, starting with the ARPA funding support that you all provided. But we also seek grants to supplement our budgets and came to you in August for support in applying for the Jefferson County Open Space Trails Partnership Grant. And thankfully, we were successful and awarded the $410,000 to use towards this project, which if we, if our, if our budget is accurate, that will allow us to use ARPA funds on different projects moving forward. And here, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, before I go to questions from council, I will invite the public to speak on this item. This is Agenda Item Number Five. I have no one signed up, but if you're here and would like to speak, you may do so now. And if you're online, please raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting. Is there any, I don't see anybody coming forward, so we'll close our public's right to speak and go to questions from council. Questions on council? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Nosler Beck, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution Number 08-2023, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Jefferson County Open Space to accept a Trails Partnership Grant in the amount of $410,000 for the Tabor Lake Trail Project.
Second.
Who was over here that seconded? Okay, we're going to give Counselor Hutchinson the second on that. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move to Agenda Item Number Six. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Resolution Number 10-2023, a resolution approving an amendment to an agreement with the Wheat Ridge Water District regarding Phase Two of the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project. At issue, the city worked cooperatively with the Wheat Ridge Water District to replace the water mains and other facilities during Phase One of the Wadsworth Widening Improvement Project. Included, including their work, in the city's project greatly simplifies the construction coordination and reduces their costs. An intergovernmental agreement between the city and the district to construct these improvements was approved by the city, City Council in February 2021. The district wishes to replace and upgrade their water facilities in Phase Two as well. Therefore, an amendment to the current agreement between the city and the district to construct these improvements has been developed. The city will be reimbursed by the district for their portion of the work.
Thank you. This will be a resolution of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have staff presentation on this item?
We don't. This one's fairly straightforward, but Maria DeAndrea, our Public Works Director, is here if you have any questions.
Okay. Before we go to questions from council, we'll open this up to the public. If you're here to speak, I don't have anyone signed up, but if you'd like to speak on this Agenda Item Number Six. Make sure I got the right one here. You may do so now. And if you're online, raise your hand, and we'll bring you in. And I don't see anybody coming forward to speak, so we will close the portion of the, this agenda item there. And are there any questions of council for this item? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 10-2023, a resolution approving an amendment to an agreement with the Wheat Ridge Water District regarding Phase Two of the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Seven. Counselor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Motion to Approve Appointments to Boards and Commissions. At the February 27, 2023 Regular Business Meeting, council appointed 21 volunteers to boards and commission seats. Two at-large alternate vacancies remain to be filled on the Board of Adjustment. Applicants who are not appointed on the February 27th were asked about their interest in serving these roles, and nine applicants indicated that they are indeed willing to fill these vacancies.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do you have any further staff comments on this item?
We don't. I believe, Mr. Mayor, you have nominations to make.
Okay, we will make some nominations tonight. Before I do, I will invite the public to speak on this item. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but this is your opportunity, and I don't see anybody coming forward. So, Counselor Hutchinson, may I have a motion, your first motion, please?
Hoppe.
Hoppe.
Thank you. I move to appoint Alastair Huber to the at-large seat on the Board of Adjustment, term to expire 03-02-2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Stites. If, without objection to the council, we will go on a voice vote? So, any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The motion carries. And your second motion, Ms. Hoppe.
I move to appoint Andy Sulak to the at-large seat on the Board of Adjustment, term to expire 03-02-2026.
And is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Dozeman. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We will now go to Agenda Item Number Eight. Counselor Hulteen, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve installation of traffic calming devices on Cody Street between 38th Avenue and 41st Avenue in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. At issue, residents on Cody Street petitioned the city to address traffic issues on the street segment from 38th Avenue to 41st Avenue in accordance with the city's Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. The city met with the residents at a neighborhood meeting and subsequently devised a plan to install speed humps to mitigate the traffic issues. The residents then secured a petition with the necessary number of property owner signatures supporting the installation of speed humps in accordance with the NTMP policy and are hereby seeking approval for implementation.
Thank you. This will be a motion of the council. It is not quasi-judicial. Mr. Goff, do we have any further staff presentation?
Mr. Steve Nguyen, our city engineer, is here if you have any questions for him.
Okay, we will do that. Before we go to questions from council, I would like to invite the public to speak on this. I have several people signed up, but it looks like my first one is Martha Martinez? Is that? Martha Denise?
Martin.
Martin, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm Montra Denise Martin.
Okay, thank you so much.
And we live at 4050 Cody Street.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to compliment my neighbor, my new neighbors across the street for doing the petition. Should have been done a long time ago. And my only comment, I supported, I signed the petition. My only comment is knowing that we have at 4025 Cody Street, headed north toward Lutheran, they're newly married, probably another kiddo along the way, we're repopulating. And then the other one is the 4040 next door to us, we're 4050, and they just moved in, they have young children. Okay, so, my only comment is to move that barrier a little bit further north to cover those two houses across the street from each other, just so that people slow down before any kids would be in the area. Okay, you've got one higher up by Lutheran, you know, coming down the hill, and I think that it's a reasonable thing, knowing how our neighborhood is repopulated. Our street, we've had several new movements on both sides of us, on 4050. So, and we've been there for, oh my gosh, 37 years. We came into Wheat Ridge when my husband moved to Denver for FAA, and been here ever since, raised our daughter here. And so, we've been, we rented a house on the other side, on Bossum Street, and then we found this house for sale and moved into it. So, we've been there 37 years, and I kind of think we should have done it a long time ago when they started putting bumps in. But it's a really heavy coming down from Lutheran Hospital going south. I mean, we need something to slow them down. And I agree with the initial plan with a slight modification.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Goff, do you think we need to speak or get an opinion on this?
Yes, maybe come up. I believe the placement of the devices are approved by the neighborhood, so I'm not sure if we can make any changes this evening without going back to the neighborhood, but Mr. Nguyen can speak to that.
Mr. Nguyen.
Good evening, Mayor and council. With respect to determine the location, certainly when we met with the neighborhood, we shared the thought of how we should space out based on, to make sure that the speeding does not pick up at any location along the way. So, it's determined on that, and that, and after that agreement, we sent our letter with a map of location of those proposed speed humps for all folks to acknowledge and sign. So, that is how determined it. It's a little bit more difficult to move a little more because, again, in our policy that we need signature approval that the device will be next to those properties, and certainly we shouldn't be moving afterwards. So, this is fully consideration of space where it should be to maintain that speed reduction that the neighbor asking us to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dorothy Archer.
Counsel, my name is Dorothy Archer. My address is 3640 Marshall Street. Not concerning the two issues that they were speaking about, inasmuch as I live in East Wheat Ridge and find it difficult to sometimes even get onto 38th Avenue if you're turning west, I emphasize your diligence and density on East Wheat Ridge. It becomes more difficult and more difficult to reach 38th Avenue. And now, of course, with Wadsworth, and I know we have to have patience with that. It will be beautiful when it's done. But the side streets have become a little more crowded, as have 41st and 45th. We see a lot more traffic, people trying to avoid Wadsworth, coming and going. So, in the building, in the future, I am asking you to be very diligent on the density of East Wheat Ridge. And by that diligent, it also brings in the ADUs. Be respectful, please.
That's really, that's really beyond scope of this.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Catherine Grant. Okay, I believe she's left us. I don't have anyone else here to speak. If you haven't signed up but would like to speak on this item, you may do so now. If you are joining us online, if you will raise your hand, we'll bring you into the meeting.
We have two, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
One second, please. The first one is Carlo Ricci. I'm sure I butchered that name, and I apologize.
Okay.
The second one is John Stuvé, and I have just now invited them both to speak.
Okay. If, Mr. Ricci, if you would, and I don't know, I'm sure I didn't get the name right, but if you would please introduce yourself and give us your address, you may speak on this item.
All good. My name's Carlo Richel. It's okay, everybody butchers it, so do not worry. I was just wanting to chime in and say, we live at 4025 Cody Street, and we are good with the placement of the speed bump as is. We did just move in, we did just get married, but we are not having kids, so that's not an issue, and we're good with the current location.
Okay, thank you very much. And if our next speaker online would join us?
Yeah, hi. My name is John Stevie. That's how you pronounce it. You guys are 0 for 2, but that's okay. Those are both our last names to pronounce. At any rate, I'm at 4035 Cody Street. I was the point person collecting signatures alongside my three-year-old and a fellow Cody Street neighbor. There's now a good chance I'll be forever known as the speed hump guy on my street, which is, which is fine by me, I suppose. But at any rate, I was very heartened by the show of support for this petition. I thank the city for their support and kind of holding my hand through the process. And, you know, we don't have sidewalks on our streets, so if we want to walk our dogs or take our children to the park or simply go for a walk, we are forced to share the road with cars. And so, I just wanted to thank my neighbors in helping slow the traffic down on the street and make our streets, AKA sidewalks, safer. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else online or in the hall here who would like to speak on this item? You may do so now. And I don't see anybody coming forward, so thank you very much for your comments. We will close our public's right to speak on this item and go to questions from council. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually have a question, and I'm going to ask it because you guys are here, not because it's a question about this specific street. With the traffic, or Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, I know we've put a pause on it, but I'm getting feedback from a few people that were in the process pre-us putting a pause on it, and they've been told, go away, come back at some point, or that if they had already submitted a petition, that now they have to go back and restart that process. Is that something that's been saved so that when we push play on this again, those are ready to go? Or do they actually have to go back and recollect signatures?
Well, we have two cases, incoming requests. For the street that was approved several meetings ago, and this one, they are much farther along where they do, they did their due diligence of collecting signature and like about ready to, for seeking approval tonight. And there are others just submitted that we went through the program review. Those are the street that we're putting on hold until we have a, a complete review of the program.
Will they need to go back through and recollect signatures, or?
No, they're not far enough to even go there yet.
Okay.
Basically, just submitted an initial letter of request to be in the program. Those are the street that were put on hold until we complete the review.
Okay. And you're keeping their information to keep them apprised for when?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Hulteen? Oh, Counselor Hutchinson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, it's in the process, what does that mean? When, when do you think that this is going to happen?
Staff had met several times and proposed several program modifications. Overall, it's to make it improve it better for the residents and other options to look at. We have several meetings so far. We're planning, still going back to council study session here sometime in the spring to present what our findings is.
So, when a project does get approved, okay, I'm, I'm just wondering, I'm thinking when it gets approved, then you're going to be doing it. But you still are going back to the neighborhood, or no, or? Because I know there's one project that has been approved, like on Lamar Street, and I'm just wondering, how long does that take?
Typically, it dictates by construction seasons. That is from between April and October. So, any street that we process and got your approval up to the April date, we usually group them in our contracts to get bits and then proceed with the construction sometime this summer. Depends on how soon we can get the contractor to start installing those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, we do have this scheduled for the May 1st study session to come back to council to talk about potential changes to this program. council to talk about potential changes to this program.
Okay. All right. So no more questions? We're going to go ask Counselor Hulteen for a motion.
Yes. I moved approved installation of a traffic calming device on Cody Street between 38th Avenue and 41st Avenue in accordance with the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Martha, Carlo, and John for your involvement, showing up tonight, speaking in support. And, you know, I was thinking about this. This is my district, and because Cody doesn't actually connect 38th all the way through 44th, I suspect people who are going quickly on Cody might live on Cody. So I hope that the speed bump process has helped everybody raise awareness around just our own personal behaviors, speeding in neighborhoods. And we want kids to be able to play safely in their communities and connect with other neighborhood kids. So I hope this is a great addition to Cody Street and happy to vote in support.
Thank you very much. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. That will include our action agenda items on the agenda. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. The, if you haven't received the survey yourself or the text on the poll, the poll that we talked about the last few weeks is out. We received, I believe, over 467 responses in the first couple of days, so it's very, getting a lot of great response on that. Then also, our resident survey is out. Some of you may have received it. You should have received a postcard. You can fill it out online, or you can wait for the paper copy if you do get one. So we encourage our residents to complete both the surveys if you get them. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. City of Turner's matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you very much. We'll go to elected officials' matters. I'll start with our clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing new this evening.
Thank you very much. We'll start with, up on the dais, with Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Did attend the ribbon cutting for ARC, and the place was packed, okay? Also Habitat for Humanity, which is really a great thing. I just want to mention, to put it out there, if anybody has any newspapers that they're wondering what to do with, ARC will take them, because they use the newspapers to wrap their glassware and china with. So that's a way of getting rid of newspapers. And I've been doing that for years. But anyway, regarding the people who came up and spoke earlier, is that something we can talk about or no?
Well, it's, the, there's a process, of course, for treating referendum petitions. And I'll answer your question, but I think a little context is probably helpful. There's a process for that that's actually established by the charter, which the residents and voters of the city approve. And that process is that there's a petition which is reviewed by the clerk, which was done, as was mentioned. And then, to the extent there's dissatisfaction with the clerk's decision, there's the right to protest. That right was exercised, and a day-long hearing was held. And so that process got followed. That's the process of both the charter and the revised statutes. At the end of that hearing, the hearing officer upheld the city clerk. And so the next step in any process to challenge that is a district court action, which has been filed. The council doesn't have the ability to change the outcome of that, of that process. That process is ongoing, and that's what was contemplated by the charter. The case is now in front of the district court judge, and it will work its way through that process as well. The council doesn't really have the opportunity, and shouldn't under our charter, to say, "Well, the city clerk did this decision, but we're going to change it." That's a job the charter gives to the clerk and does not give to the council. It simply doesn't. I don't really have objection to, at all, to members of the council, you know, taking calls. You will get calls, and I understand that. You're welcome to take those calls. But my advice to you is that the one thing the council can't do is sort of unwind any of the decisions made by the other elected official that you have here in the form of the city clerk, or unwind a decision that the hearing officer made, because that's the process. And you have to respect that process. It's the one that's contemplated by our charter. So with that background, you may well get calls, and I'm fine with you taking those calls and responding. But there is a limit on what council can, quote, "do" about this. And I've outlined to you that it's, you know, that process is ongoing and has to be followed. It's not a council process at this point. It's a district court process. So that's the answer I can give you. Take the calls, but it isn't something where you can say, "Very good. I'm going to do a motion to council the next meeting to direct the city clerk to approve this signature and disapprove that one." And that's a job given to that elected official and not to the council.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Nosler Beck.
Before council tonight, there was a meeting at Wheat Ridge High School with the superintendent, Tracy Dorland, for Jeffco Schools, to host a listening session with the community, just to hear about issues that matter to Wheat Ridge. And some of the counselors, Counselor Stites and Counselor Dozeman were at the meeting tonight. That went from 5:00 to about 6:30. We had to leave a little early. But just to provide a bit of an update, is that the district is really wanting to be a part of making sure they're supporting what we need in the transition with the closures of the schools. And also, there's been quite a bit of attention on Wheat Ridge High School and making sure that the high school gets the funds that it needs to make some critical improvements from the 2018 bond. And so the conversation was good, but I do encourage the community to stay engaged on our schools in Wheat Ridge and continue to reach out to school board members and to the school district directly, or the principals and staff at the schools that maybe you have students attending, to stay on top of these issues and making sure that the district knows that we really do care about our schools here in this community. The questions that we did not get answered today during our conversations was around what is going to be happening to the buildings with the schools that are going to be closed after this school year, so beginning in June. And there is a process that is starting with the school district. You can find out more information about that on the website. But I'm going to just keep providing updates if there are opportunities to participate in some of those conversations around the schools and those closures and the future of those properties. So just a little update on that meeting tonight, and just let's stick with our schools, Wheat Ridge. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for keeping us updated on that. Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things I wanted to share. So I live right around the corner from King of Wings, and it is so exciting on the weekends. They literally have a line that snakes all the way down the block for people waiting to get wings. I feel like, I mean, it's, I haven't seen something like that in a long time. I lived right down the street from the very first Chipotle when it opened, and I was there the very first day. And it reminds me of like the Chipotle craze when there was just one Chipotle. So really proud. King of Wings is District 2. And then I just, I mentioned in a previous meeting that the governor is planning on introducing a series of bills that are going to be providing some great proposed rebates for all car ruddens, including a proposed $800 e-bike rebate, tax rebate for all car ruddens, and also rebates on electric vehicles and heat pumps. So we should be tracking those, and if that, those make their way through the legislature, I think those are great opportunities for our residents to help be part of a solution. The e-bikes, that would be 10 years that every car rudden would be eligible for an $800 point-of-sale rebate on an e-bike. So I will just continue to emphasize that e-bikes are increasingly part of our transportation system and for us as a city to be really thinking about how we can accommodate them. I think we're doing that in some of our planning now, but as we go into our comprehensive plan, just thinking about the electrification of the transportation system and how as a city we're not reacting to it, but leading with it to let people know that we want electric vehicles to be part of our transportation. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to welcome Habitat for Humanity to Wheat Ridge. Councilmember Hutchinson, Mayor Bud Starker, and city manager Patrick Goff and I were able to attend the groundbreaking for Miller Homes in District 4 in Wheat Ridge. So it'll be right behind Compass Montessori. It'll be eight units that will be for sale. So this is an opportunity for affordable housing in our community. It will be attracting young families into our city and hopefully filling some seats in our schools. And so I just wanted to welcome them and thank you for choosing our community to build affordable homes in. And I really appreciate our ongoing partnership with Foothills Regional Housing and am looking forward to more opportunities to add affordable options in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank all the citizens that came out on Saturday morning for our District 3 meeting. And that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you again to Athletic Director Jason Campbell for bringing in his students. I think that that is really fantastic to see the level that our students, that our academics at our high school and our athletes at our high school are really having more opportunities at the collegiate level. One thing that I did want to bring up, there were some comments about how we made policy around ADUs without having any input, and the reality is that's just not true. In the 2018 citizen survey, which is a scientific survey, in the 2020-21 survey, citizen survey, which is a scientific survey, during the NRS process and during all of the Let's Talks process. So we have had a very large amount of information and outreach about ADUs in our community. We did not just do this in a dark closet. And also, our community is unique in the very large amount of time and effort we put into engaging our citizens. And we put together, and we didn't just slap it together. As council, we had several study sessions. We spent a lot of time working on it and going through every what-ifs and whets and maybes and what do we feel like the tolerance is, and made a lot of compromises. And it's, it is a, it is a good piece of work that we did, and I appreciate everybody here that helped work on that.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a lot of fun with Ms. Hutchinson and the mayor and everybody at the ARC the other day. The newspaper thing, Ms. Hutchinson threw me through her loop. I was, she said, "I donate newspapers all the time." I was thinking it was for archives or something. I didn't understand. So I learned something new that day, so I appreciate that, Ms. Hutchinson. But that was a lot of fun. Got a cool picture with Arky, the bird, and that was pretty cool. That's a pretty amazing store. It's massive. So if you haven't had a chance to go in yet, definitely go in and check it out. It all goes to a really good cause. We got to meet a lot of the staff members that they have there, which are also, you know, I'm not only a member, I'm also, not only the staff member, but I'm also a client. And those guys all kind of like work the store, and they do a great job there. So that was a lot of fun. Our district meeting on Saturday was well-attended, and we got a lot of good feedback from our citizens. We did talk a little bit about the petition and all that, but, you know, and as we stated and Ms. Weaver stated and over and over, this is something that has to be handled in the courts and, you know, there's no influence that we can have at that point. So the process needs to take its course, and that's part of what the charter lays out. But I do appreciate all the citizens who came out, and we had a good two-hour conversation regarding everything going on in Wheat Ridge. That's how long it took me, just, by the way, it took an hour and a half just to list off all the really cool things going on in Wheat Ridge. So that's pretty awesome. And a lot of great things happened in District 3 as well. Tonight's meeting at the high school, I appreciate Superintendent Dorland. I know I've been, I personally have been very hard on the Jeffco School District over the last couple of months, but I do appreciate her coming to Wheat Ridge and hearing the citizens here and hearing what we have to say. And I think we gave some good feedback, certainly before we left, and she had some good answers. And I hope that we'll be able to continue to work not only in helping our schools like Everett and Wheat Ridge become stronger, and Wheat Ridge has a tradition of excellence unlike any other high school out there. And we just want to make sure that that's maintained. She said that she's committed to that, and so hopefully Jeffco will continue to work with us. And not only that, but we want to know what's going to happen with those elementary schools that are now vacated and what we can do to help that process and how we can inform the school board and the district staff on what can be done there. So we definitely appreciate them for coming out and working with us on that. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I just want to finish up by saying, if you can find it, find it in buying Wheat Ridge. I know St. Patrick's Day is coming up this weekend, so there's probably plenty of green beer and Guinness and Irish car bombs and whatever else you need to get. You will find it plenty here in Wheat Ridge. So fish and chips, all that good stuff. So thank you.
Okay. Maybe a little corned beef, corned beef and cabbage, you know, so great. Thank you, Mayor Protim Stites. I want to sort of close tonight with a few thank yous and welcomes. The ARC grand opening last week was really a pleasure to attend. We welcomed them to Wheat Ridge. Habitat for Humanity, I'm happy to have them building in Wheat Ridge, putting together eight for-sale properties for affordable housing. I want to thank the citizens who joined me on Saturday morning for coffee with the mayor. We had some really interesting and vital discussions, so I want to thank those folks for coming. I always appreciate, I'm always sort of down, you know, why do I have to get up early on a Saturday morning? And boy, by the time I leave at 10 o'clock, I'm totally charged. So thank you very much for charging me up. I want to really thank the citizens who came tonight and joined us online to speak about issues that they're concerned with in our community. This is really how we make better decisions, is listening to people. All of our counselors and myself listened to the discussion, and we appreciate you coming and speaking to us. So thank you a lot. I want to thank and congratulate all the student athletes who came and joined us tonight. Boy, what a great group of young folks. I'm really excited to have them, you know, graduating, going off to college, and taking our community with them. We wish them the best of luck. I was really pleased to get a letter this week from Mrs. Teresa Kidderman, and she is a grandmother living here in Wheat Ridge. Her two grand twins, Jack and Anna Kidderman, go to Prospect Valley School. And apparently Jack, they're in the third grade there. Jack, over twice in the last six months or so, he's had a choking incident at school. And a paraprofessional there, Miss Judy Mullins Sig, has given him the Heimlich twice. And she purports that she has saved his life, and she is very appreciative. And I want the, my copy of the letter was here. It also went to Dr. Jill Biden in Washington, DC. But I want to thank Mrs. Kidderman for sending me this letter of recognition and saying a thank you and a well-done to Ms. Sig for saving young Jack's life. And I think anytime we can save a life in our community, we've done, we've done good work. So with that, if you will, please drive safely around our town and greet everyone with a smile. We will be back again in this venue one week from tonight, right, at a study session. So if there's no more business to come before council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.